We now have a quorum. I'd like to call the meeting to order, so please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation in a galaxy. In this little free agency.
I was just joking, Connie.
All right, just make a note on the roll call. Kerry, Don, and Greg are all absent tonight. Old business approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of 17 June 2021 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 17, 2021 as presented.
Remove.
Have a motion and a second call the roll.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. New business, audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Presentations, items for council consideration. K-7 and Gilman Road intersection study. Public Works Director Mike Spiegelmeier will present the study findings to the council. Mike?
Yes. As you're aware, the, there was some, this has been an ongoing process. In 2011, the council first considered the intersection of K-7 and Gilman. There was a study then and then, and there was some discussion between Kansas Department of Transportation and the City of Lansing, but ultimately it never really moved forward at that time. Some things had changed, and then we revisited it in 2020. The, there was a work session with the city council, and after the work session with the city council, there was direction given to the Public Works Department to commission another study to look at the warrants for the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of K-7 and Gilman. Unfortunately, between the January 2020, and there was a discussion during that where we wanted to wait till after spring break so that we got the most advantageous traffic counts is when the COVID-19 pandemic hit. So we have not really, we're not really sure where our traffic counts are in relationship to, you know, what a new normal would be at this point. But the study proceeded on just to analyze the intersection with what we currently have. The results of that finding have been presented inside the memorandum that has been presented to the city council and to the City of Lansing. And the bottom line is, at this time, the intersection does not meet the warrants for the installation of a traffic signal there. Now, that being said, that doesn't mean that at some point in the future, something might precipitate a change. This is a likely location for a traffic signal. I think everyone realizes that. There's a lot of things that will play into that, too. One, our industrial park and the transfer station are east of there with a lot of southbound turning movements that need to happen. So if that was to grow, we would start seeing that potentially occur. And the other one is, you know, the completion of the Gilman Road corridor is something that is on the midterm horizon for the City of Lansing. So when the Gilman Road corridor is completed, and if we see further development around the high school, there's also the potential for a changing traffic pattern, which will require further analysis at that time. Just be aware, though, that the K-7 and Gilman interchange does present some challenges to the installation of a traffic signal. One, the K-7 corridor plan would need to be complied with since this is a Kansas Department of Transportation highway, and so there would be a lot of oversight from KDOT. And the second is, as you are aware, there is a bridge immediately south of that intersection. And so when you go to put an intersection, when you put in acceleration, deceleration lanes and stuff like that to meet current modern geometries, the proximity of the bridge may pose some additional challenges that would need to be addressed as we move forward on that. But the bottom line is, the study showed that we're not quite there yet. That's not to say that if the city wanted to undertake the project at some point in the future, Kansas Department of Transportation might not entertain that. They've indicated in the past that if it was 100% city-funded project, that they would be willing to look at that. But be aware that, you know, the K-7 plan would need to be addressed as well as, you know, the funding for that. This could be, as I described with the challenges in geometry, a significant cost.
Is there a chance at some point that KDOT would be more willing to pony up?
There's always the potential that KDOT will participate. K-7 corridor funds are available. They're currently allocated for the R-cut that is being installed at Parallel Road. So that's where KDOT is currently spending their K-7 corridor funds now. But, you know, K-7 is a vital corridor of the state of Kansas, so they will continue to fund projects on that corridor into the future. Again, we did discuss using highway safety funds. However, the accident crash data, although it is there, it is not at the level that would automatically qualify it for funding as other intersections in Kansas.
Does it show any pickup in it? There's, this is not the first time that intersection's been looked at. Is there any kind of an increase in anything? Will they tell you that?
The unfortunate thing is, the opposite has kind of occurred because the study was commissioned after the traffic patterns shifted with the COVID-19 pandemic. So there's actually different traffic than there was even in 2011. So at some point, we're going to want to study it again once we achieve more of an equilibrium.
So a year from now, it might be back where it was there.
Yes, and I think traffic counts in and of themselves would be a pretty good indicator. And that's something that we could commission fairly easily if that was something that we wanted to just kind of snapshot. I know the county also did traffic counts during the interim to help with some of the projects that they were working on. So they're, you know, and KDOT every two years does a, does another snapshot. And if KDOT's snapshot was to show us something that we thought might be beneficial to the city, we would certainly want to execute on that information.
So is there, is there, is there, I know the speed limit. I mean, I've read the report, and I appreciate everything you're doing on that, Mike. Does it qualify for yellow flashing light maybe during the busy times to just, I mean, maybe it's not a stoplight, but at least it's something to be cautioned that there's a heavy amount of traffic trying to cross during certain hours versus a yellow flashing light all the time? I don't know, but I'm just trying to identify the fact that until that Gilman road goes all the way through to the high school, as you indicated, is still a project. I think traffic's going to pick up, but I don't, I don't think you're going to see the large amount of traffic that we used to have prior to COVID. There's a lot of changes if you're looking at traffic as a study of majority of that traffic working in Fort Leavenworth. If that, if that's majority of the traffic passing through to get to Leavenworth and passing back through, if that's where a lot of that traffic is, I don't think we're going to see those days anymore.
Well, again-
A lot of changes have gone into that.
I would concur that, that there is definitely a change in traffic patterns associated with recent events. However, I will also say that we are experiencing growth, you know, some commercial growth right now, and at some point, we're hoping to receive more residential growth. And as traffic patterns modify and change, we, we would anticipate that we would want to definitely look again. To say that, that a signal at this intersection is never going to happen would be, would be really short sighted. I think it's not a question of if, but a question of when, and when the warrants meet it. And when the development and the traffic justify it, then I think we need to be prepared to, to consider that project. Again, solicit for funding as, as we can because we always like to work with our partners to help offset the cost and, and get a joint effort.
Would a J-cut there even be potential possible?
They would, if, if KDOT was to want to fund this, they would require us to consider an R-cut. Now, again, I've, I've outlined some of the geometric challenges at this location because of the proximity of the bridge. And also McIntyre was a pretty good candidate because it's a mile south and because the projected traffic has more right turns. There's a lot of people that would come off of K-5 and go into Lansing, or a lot of people that come off of McIntyre, go south onto. With the industrial park there, there's a lot of traffic that comes out of the industrial park and also goes south. So maybe, I mean, it would require further analysis, but it is, it is a solution that KDOT would want us to analyze as, as a potential interim solution. So-
There's a lot of truck traffic, too, because you've got transfer trucks leaving the transfer station. You've got line of weaver trucks leaving this area in the industrial park. So there's a lot of truck traffic that would have to go up, crossover, and come back, which would be pretty tough.
And Penny's Concrete may or may not ever get up to full capacity again, or, and I know they've talked about putting asphalt out there, too. So I mean, yes, yes, that's a-
And just so we're clear, this is not just lights or anything. I mean, we could be looking at having to redo the bridges.
Well, the bridges would have to be taken into consideration when we look at a solution at this intersection, just because of the location. I mean, yeah, I mean, my concern would be if we needed additional deceleration capacity coming from the northbound traffic, there's, you run into that bridge pretty quick.
Does that mean the bridge would have to be moved north-south, or it is widened?
I would think that would have to, the bridge would have to be widened, more or less. I don't think you could really move it a lot. I mean, it's pretty much over the channel as it exists, but-
Well, I didn't know if that means if you had to have a certain, from the center of the intersection to the, to the center of the bridge had to be a certain deal or-
No, I, I think you could decelerate upon the bridge surface. Again, I don't know the age of those bridges, so some of that would come into the KDOT's calculation. Because, you know, usually a bridge is 75 to 100-year investment.
So what are the other safety options besides the traffic signal? I mean, I think Marcus mentioned the flashing yellow during times of high volume. I mean, any, anything else?
Yeah, they have described that we could maybe stripe some, like what they call lane guides. Have you seen those in intersection where they just, so that when you get into the center median to make your turn, you kind of have lanes shown where people are supposed to go?
You might have two.
Mm-hmm, yep. And that's something we could consider. And that's a pretty cost-effective, you know, pavement marking is a very cost-effective safety solution.
Does that still fall back on whatever we do to that intersection and changing the outlook of it, that we're probably going to have to involve KDOT? They're going to have to say, hey, no, you can't paint that. Yes, you can put the flashing light there. They still going to dictate to us what we can do at that intersection, right?
Yes, KDOT will ultimately have control over that since it is Kansas Highway 7, US 73. I think it's still US 73.
I'll tell you what, I, you know, we, we've got a business park there, and we have businesses. But I feel so, I feel for them. Between the hours of 6:30 and 8:00, trying to come out and go south, it's not happening. I mean, those trucks just stack up, and they just hope and pray that the lights are timed about right from, goodness.
Is it Leavenworth?
Paul, Paul, Fairmont, Fairmont.
Is it Fairmont?
Fairmont's the first light.
Is the next light? Yeah, that light to the north light there on 7. Between those lights and all that traffic, that traffic coming off of Gilman from industrial park and everything trying to go south, they're trying to time it. That's about the only time they can get across. Because it's nonstop traffic coming north. And then from 3:30 to 17, from 3:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon, from north going south, it's just bumper to bumper, nonstop.
I mean, I'd suggest that we look at whatever safety things we can do. You know, I mean, if we're not going to immediately be able to put a, you know, a traffic signal there, then what other things can we do? And then kind of come up with an idea on that and then try and get it through KDOT. Yeah, that's my suggestion.
Good idea.
Whatever KDOT approves, right.
I will-
Is there a timeframe set for reevaluation since they didn't have a?
I, I think we don't have one set now, but what we will do is continue to monitor KDOT's traffic counts because they publish those every two years and they share those with us. And if we see something, or if something were to precipitate a change, we could execute a, a further refinement of this.
We're awful lucky that some of them, traffic counts didn't involve some of the other projects that we have going on, too.
Yes.
Did we do one for Eisenhower when they did that prior to us getting approval to redo Eisen from the end of the corner there?
Yep.
So they did traffic counts in that. How did that compare, do you know? Do you remember?
Well, I, I think that one was a very volumetric traffic count. It didn't look at turning movements on Gilman. But what it did show is there was a, I think there was a lot more traffic in like 2018, 2019 than we are currently experiencing.
Yeah, I was just wondering if-
People are working them out now.
Any other questions to answer?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Anybody want to speak on that? Did anybody here in the audience want to talk on that subject? I didn't.
I do.
Please come up to the microphone and just state your name and-
My name is Merrily Thompson, and I live in Rock Creek, just like you do. We're starting, we're going to start a neighborhood watch in our community. I was just wondering, do you want me to get in contact with USAA and find out how many accidents have been in that median? Because I've had friends that have moved, and they have almost totaled their cars lying in that median. So putting some lanes in there so people know what to do, go in the right-hand lane, go to the left, would be very beneficial. Unfortunately, this was done during COVID. But I wonder with CGSC coming in and football coming in, if October would be a timely time to redo this again? Because I can guarantee we'll have more traffic.
Yes, I mean, we can have, Mike, you can find out what the scheduled timeline that KDOT does, right? So we can kind of see if there's going to be a huge gap between then and when we can do it again.
Not that there's any housing available where I live.
True, not right now, is there?
But I was just wondering, I was just wondering about that, if they could do that. Because I would hate to see some teenager get hurt in that median.
That has been an intersection of controversy since I've been on the council, and we've tried.
I know.
Every, every different set of council members up here has tried to get somebody to go with the light.
I know, I know.
With KDOT, and they just won't, would come back the same story every time.
Yeah, yeah, I know. But we'll see what happens to this football season this year.
And like we said, we'll, we'll look at other ways to try and make that intersection safer without trying to push for a signal.
But, but the terrain is, needs to be adjusted also because I've noticed that south of here, the median is all mowed. But when you get into Lansing, it's not because it, it just, it's where I got hit by a deer. They go in the middle of the median, they come up in the tall grass, and then they come and get you where you don't think they're going to come and get you. Yeah, so, but that terrain is very, very difficult. And I don't think the, the mowers want to go out there when it's wet. Because it's too precarious. But that'd be good if they could do that in October when we have more things going on. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three is a preliminary plat for Richardson replat. This is an information only and does not require any action. The preliminary plat was reviewed and approved by the planning commission at the June 16, 2021 meeting. The final plat will come to, to the future city council meeting. Who's talking about that, you Matt?
I am.
Please do.
Whatever questions you have.
What do we, what are we going to do with the water? That's what I want. Everybody in the neighborhood, everybody lives around all that. It's always been the controversial ditch that runs between that, that big, right down through the middle of that property. Now we're splitting it. We're talking about building houses on both sides of it. Where are we going to put the water?
So the only part of this that would be buildable would be the northern, these four northern tracks. This tract on this side will become part of this property owner's property.
He can't add anything to that?
He could put a building in if he wants to, but there wouldn't be any additional-
He could add a garage, right?
Sorry?
He could add a garage?
Correct. But there wouldn't be any additional housing on that lot.
What, who's going to, well, all right, that, that takes that into consideration. I just turned, who is going to have to carry the water? Whose property? I'm trying to understand the drawing.
There's a natural channel that runs down through here. It's kind of hard to see because it's marked up in cyan, but it's, it runs down through this area. On the final plat that they've already submitted for us, they do have an easement that's associated with that, a drainage easement that they're going to give us. So then at that point, the city would have the ability to maintain that channel.
So it's going to be an open channel?
There's no public improvements planned with this plat. So there wouldn't be any storm sewer or anything like that included with this.
So it's still being just an open ditch like it is now?
Correct.
Are they going to move the ditch in, in any way that you-
Not, not to my knowledge. This is purely an action to create buildable lots.
I just, some of the questions as a neighbor, the guy that has purchased it, you know, is asking.
Sure.
I, I can't, you know, I didn't think that they, we just talked like they were going to, we were going to tube it or anything. But I think, but I'm still, the water's still going to come. Everything that comes up off of the Richardson side, crap around the old school. And all drains right on that side of Carroll Street. And that's why I was wondering, will all the water still go to the same ditch?
Yeah, yep.
What you got there? Any other questions? I had one question on the, I mean, how wide these lots are. Is that, I say 68 feet? Is that the minimum for the UDO or something?
So this is, this property is zoned R2, if my memory serves. It should have the zoning on there. If it's not on this, on the preliminary, it'll definitely be on the final. But I believe it's R2, which allows for a 60-foot lot width.
Okay.
R1 requires a 75-foot lot width.
What can they build on R2?
60-foot lot, so it's, they're smaller lots.
I mean, just house?
Single-family homes.
Single-family homes, that's the limit.
Yeah.
Right, thanks.
Sure.
Might as well stay up here, though. So reports, city attorney.
Another report, ma'am.
Tim, I'm going to let Matt go first and talk about, okay? And then I'll hit you next.
Let me flip over to the other. So I wanted to give everybody an update on the July 3 event. With the five or six days of rain we've had, because apparently Noah was in town, there's, the field's very, very wet. It's just, it's soaked. It's walkable, but it's definitely not drivable. The stage that we're bringing in for the musicians, that's shown on here right next to the number 11 that's there, that's a semi-trailer. So in order to get that stage back here in the back where we would have had it, we're just really concerned that we're either going to bury it or it's just going to tear the heck out of the field. So we don't want to do that. So because of that, we've repositioned everything and moved everything. So we won't have any public parking on site. The shuttles will be running. We've added two buses, so we'll have six buses running instead of four. And we will start them at noon instead of at 5:00. So we'll have all those buses running all day to bring, to bring people in and out. And those buses are going to run both directions. So if somebody comes out at noon and wants to leave at 2:00, they can. They just get on the bus and go back to the parking lot wherever they parked, and they can go home. It's not like they bring people out and you have to stay there until the end of the day. So that's the plan for traffic. We do have, there's a small amount of ADA parking on site right here in this corner. It's not a lot, but we'll have some ADA parking out there so that people that need that can come out and park there. The gate will be closed. PD will staff the gate. They will not let people in unless they have a pass, which we have printed off and made staff passes and, and passes for everybody who's going to be out there. But the ADA parking, if somebody comes in and they have a placard, PD will let them come in until that parking is full.
What will people be allowed to take with them on the shuttle buses?
So chairs, blankets, coolers, those things are all fine. Sorry?
I said, Kate. Somebody might try to put one on, or?
We've, we've had that question already, whether or not they can bring their own alcohol. And because of the state laws, consumption of alcohol that's not provided by the onsite vendor is not allowed. So-
So that's going to eliminate it as a beer tent, being that it's going to-
The beer vendor will be there.
On-site.
Yes, yes, they're, in fact, they're spot one.
So everything will have to be dispersed before they get on the buses to leave the premises.
Correct.
Or will the fireworks be shot from the same area?
So the fireworks are going to be a little different. The vendor is actually going to frame the stage. So what that means is you'll be able to view the fireworks from the same spot. You'll view the concert. With the other map, you would have viewed the concert from down here on this side, and then the fireworks would have been all the way across the field. With the way this is laid out, the fireworks, the, the on-ground stuff is these four kind of cyan dots that are there. Those are the scissor lifts that will be there for the lights. There'll be some pyro stuff on those scissor lifts as well. So that's going to be the ground stuff. Your big stuff that you have, your big aerial stuff will be back here in the field, probably in about this location. We, the field is stable enough in the middle that we can get the fire truck, or the, well, fire as well, but the fireworks vehicle out there so they can unload. But it's not stable enough. Once you get off that main path, it deteriorates pretty fast, so.
So they're, they're not going to let anybody in after 9:00?
The buses will run, I believe, until 9:30.
9:30.
Yeah. So as long as you get there before that, because we'll, we'll stop the buses during the fireworks event, but that's, that's the only time we'll stop them.
Something like you're going to stop.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's the only time we'll stop the buses is during the fireworks. Outside of that.
People can kind of go all day long.
Yep.
They can go home, come back, doesn't make any difference.
Yes, correct.
Were they able to spray the field today?
Spray the field?
Were they spraying it for?
So they, that was, we shifted all of this right at the same time that they were spraying.
Right.
So there's a little bit of money that got spent spraying a field that we're not going to see an advantage for because we're not going to be in that field.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have them treated for fleas and chiggers and all those things. Yeah, yep. So then your, your rides and stuff will be down here in the front and in this top level of the parking lot. The fire department is this piece that's right here. City will have a tent up here. The musicians will have, the spot 11 that's on there is the musicians'. So they'll have a place where they can sign stuff and meet people and do merchandise and those things.
How is the playground level, is that up out of the, I mean, is it spoken weather?
You'll still be able, you'll still be able to access the playground. The fence-
I mean, how about the fields to the, you know, the soccer-
Those will all be, all be accessible.
Okay.
If somebody wanted to go walk up there on the field instead of cheer up and watch, they could, yeah. Yeah, they definitely don't have to watch just from this area. That's, all of this grass that's out here would all be available for seating for people to sit in if they want to go over there and watch. Yep.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, sorry it had to happen, but, you know, it is what it is. Looks like you grabbed it and took care of it.
I think it's going to be a good event overall, even though we had a transition.
Glad to be able to get a hold of, get everything lined up pre. It's just not going to start raining tonight, and you got to move all this stuff around.
Yeah, well, we'd already, the beginning of this week, when we looked at the forecast, we started considering, what are we going to do if, you know, if it is to the point where we can't have it in the field?
What's the plan again for letting folks know that there is no parking out here? I mean, they may or may not know that.
Yeah, so I'm sorry I didn't get into that. So we, we've put everything out on social media. Blaine's crew, his management team, will be putting stuff out on the event and on social media this evening to let everybody who's, that he's attracting know that there's not going to be any onsite parking. We've got route maps that we've put up for people so they can see where the buses are going. There's a, a black route and a red route. Those will be assigned to one school so people know what bus they got off of, so they know which bus to get on, so they don't end up at the other school if they park, you know, you don't want to end up at the elementary if you park at the high school. So we have all that stuff. We also have, we've got a message board that we rented today that will go up at the corner of 4-H and DeSoto, likely first thing in the morning. Oh, it's already up? Well, the message board out in front of City Hall is up. Yeah, but we've got another one that's going to go, like a traffic construction message board that'll go over at the corner of 4-H and DeSoto that has instructions on it to turn left to go to the high school, turn right and go to Mary Street to go to the elementary school.
No event park?
Yes, the very first piece that it says is no park, no, no event parking at Bernard Park.
Okay.
So, yep.
What's your bus route? So the buses come in and do a U-turn and do what?
So they'll actually do, the buses will come in through the normal entrance, and they'll actually pull down this road, back up in here, and then pull forward. And the loading point is right here next to the bridge. So it'll be a three-point turn. There's not, unfortunately, I would love to be able to have it where they can, because at the, at the high school and the elementary school, both, they're just driving through the parking lot. They don't have to stop and back up. But unfortunately, we just don't have enough room out here to do that kind of setup, so.
Despite mother nature, putting a damper on it, it's still going to be way better than watching it in your car in the bank parking lot.
Yeah.
We're going to have a good time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just excited about all the vendors that you got coming. I mean, that's, that's pretty exciting and, I don't think the parents are going to be too bad with all the rides and you're able to access them from concrete versus chiggers.
Yep. Well, and the other thing I would tell you, too, if you want a listing of the, the vendors that are going to be out there, if you go to the city's GIS portal, they, our GIS technician built an app on there. You can click on it, and you can actually click on each one of those tents, and it will show you what the vendor is and their website and information on them.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
You guys have done a great job this week with all this. I just want to let you know.
Got to adapt, that's all we- Got to adapt, that's all we-
Appreciate it.
You have overcome.
Still haven't gone yet. All right, we'll see how it turns out. Thanks.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tim? Got nothing to report?
Uh-huh.
Anybody else? Department head?
Not going to introduce your guests?
Who's?
Chantel Skoggin is pinch hitting for Sarah tonight.
That's right. All right, so we'll go around the horn. Marcus, you're up first tonight.
Yeah, thanks a lot for all the hard work.